The 10th VOC meeting. Before we get started, I'd just like to offer up our condolences to Bill Tanks. His wife, LeAnn, passed away over the weekend. He was a former fire department with Cobb and an agency director and city of, I want to say Powder Springs, but I think it's Austin.
It was Powder Springs.
He was Powder Springs and now City of Mableton, city manager. So just keep him and the family in your prayers as they go through this difficult time. Okay, our meeting is called to order. Our invocation today will be presented by Pastor Chad Bailey of Midway Presbyterian Church, and then the pledge will be given by Officer Abbott of Cobb County PD. If you will, please stand.
Let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, you reign with justice and mercy, and your wisdom surpasses all understanding. We acknowledge that the earth belongs to you and everything in it, the world and all who live in it. And as this board gathers today to conduct their work and trust it to them, we ask for your guiding presence. Lord, grant these commissioners wisdom from above, wisdom that is pure and peaceable and considerate, open to reason, full of mercy and good fruit. May their decisions reflect integrity and compassion, a sincere desire to serve the common good. Remind them that their leadership is not for personal gain, but for stewardship under your sovereign hand. We pray, oh Lord, that you would direct their paths as they trust in you with all their hearts and lean not on their own understanding. Help them to seek justice and love mercy and walk humbly with you. Lord, look with favor upon the people of Cobb County. Bless every household and business and neighborhood. Strengthen our unity and protect the vulnerable and grant peace within our communities. May mercy and truth come together and may righteousness and peace dwell side by side. Lord, we commit this meeting to you. May the work done here today serve not only this generation, but also those yet to come. We pray all this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Bailey and Officer Abbott. Appreciate that. Also, LeAnn was also a county employee for a long time in public safety, so, sorry, that slipped my mind. So our chair will not be with us today. I am vice chair this year, so I will be running the meeting, so thank you for your patience with me today. So we have no presentations, which may be a first or, in a long time, a first. And so we'll jump right into a public comment for those that are signed up, and Mr. Rowland will give some instructions for us.
Thank you, Vice Chair. As the board provides the podium for public comments, it's appropriate to review some of those related meeting rules. Please state your name, and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be made to the commission as a body and addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the board. Comments should not be slanderous. The board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to all speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should get of others the right to both listen and to be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the board or the administration of Cobb government. There is a timer on the podium to keep track of your three minutes. The first public speaker is Tracy Stevenson.
Good morning, everyone. Just a couple of comments. Your item number 11, to approve the creation of network security administrator position in the Information Technology Services Department. Nothing like building a fence after you let the cows out of the barn. You know, we could have done this a while ago and wouldn't have this problem. Remember, we can't use the video stuff because we were too unsecure. But anyway, I applaud you for at least moving, but it's a little too late. Second thing I want to talk about is Kim Lee Horn. I believe every time I keep reading the agenda items, Kim Lee Horn gets awarded more contracts for more things in this county. That's just unbelievable. These are engineering contracts where people that live here and have lived here forever, that are consulting engineers, know the area better. This money stays 100% in Georgia when it's a local firm. It stays in 100% in Cobb County. Why we need a DC-based Kim Lee Horn to do our local projects blows my mind. I know they have an Atlanta office. Heck, I would too if I could keep getting money out of the county and the state. But we've got a lot of qualified people. Think of all the Georgia Tech graduates that work locally here. You know, these are some of the best of the best and some of the brightest. How are we not using our local resources? And I in particular take this all the way to the water department. You know, we've got projects that we're spending billions of dollars on at the end of the day that are stormwater repairs, they are water system upgrades, filtration systems and so forth. Why are we not using local born and bred contractors here? We've got some great talented people. I'd like to see us start refocusing our energy on keeping Cobb money in Cobb. Thank you.
The next public speaker is Carter Ray.
Good morning. My name is Carter Ray. I am a district resident who recently graduated from Walton High School. I'm deeply concerned about my generation's future. I'm scared that I'll never be able to own home, forced to rent for my entire life. I'm scared that I'll never be able to achieve the American dream, and so are tens of thousands of young people across the county who don't often have their voices heard in this room. It is evident to everyone here that we live in a housing crisis, and yet for all the talk I hear from politicians, from the media, and from my peers, I feel like there's nothing being done about it. According to a report by the ARC, Cobb will be short over 38,000 homes by the year 2050 at the current rate of development. The solution that we need and that younger generations ask for is more housing choice. The thing is, Cobb County already knows that, but we're not acting on it. According to our own strategic plan from 2023 to 2028, key success indicators include both adequate quantity and availability of housing types and increased attainable and quality housing options. As Cobb County grows, we have a moral duty to ensure that housing is affordable and attainable for everyone that we can, because housing is not just an asset to be hoarded and profited off of. It is a human right. It may feel easy to ignore this issue, given the lack of input that young people often have in influencing county policy, but that would be rejecting our own goal to make Cobb County the best place to live and work for everyone. There are several ways I believe we can easily and gradually increase housing stock in the county, and I argue we should immediately implement some of these policies to help relieve, to introduce relief for the housing crisis. We should allow for the construction of smaller homes and starter homes by reducing some of the lot size requirements, square footage requirements, and setback requirements to make it easier to build housing wherever we can. We should allow for the construction of more attached single-family homes and ADUs in places that are currently zoned for just single-family detached. We should allow for the construction of multiplex structures and condos in new or redeveloped subdivisions. And I believe we should allow for the construction of mixed-use developments that combine both residential and commercial use in areas that are currently served by public transit. Additionally, I believe we should incentivize areas with high job growth to increase density and promote affordable housing options for young people who want to live in the county, because when I come back from college, I want to be able to live here, but increasingly I don't feel like I may be able to. I believe that these policies have widespread support among many of the young people in our county, and I hope you will listen to them. I'd be happy to discuss what sort of public support would be needed for any of these community changes, and I believe these policy implementations are an important way to create a better Cobb. Thank you.
Matt Stegall.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Matt Stegall. I live in District One, and I'm here today to talk about pedestrian safety. The prayer this morning was actually really great because it was mentioned that we must protect our most vulnerable, and it definitely like, you know, struck that light bulb, and it's definitely related to what I'm here to talk about, because as I was walking around the Battery with my seven-year-old son last weekend, this was the game where we blew the six-run lead, but that is totally beside the point. But yeah, and, but we're walking around the most pedestrian-friendly area of Cobb County, and as we're walking along this multi-use trail on 41, which currently at that area has about eight lanes for traffic, the entire pedestrian right-of-way was blocked by an electronic sign, a sign for cars. And so it was one of those, and you know, I've got a photo of my son standing in front of him and all of that, and literally the entire multi-use trail is blocked for a sign for cars. And it just, you know, it just reiterates the point that I keep seeing over and over again, to where on this meeting, agenda item number 21, it's a, it's one of those projects, there's two projects on the agenda item. It's related to the National Park. One of them is a multi-use trail on Powder Springs Road, which is really great, but the other one is the intersection of, let's see, Salisbury Road and Old Mountain Road. It's an intersection safety improvement project, and it's meant to be, it's a critical intersection where pedestrian safety can be improved. And what is our solution for that? Well, it's adding the construction of two new channelized right turns for cars and the addition of a westbound left turn lane at Salisbury Road for cars. And so it's just weird to me, and it's hard for me to understand why this project for pedestrian safety includes adding three new lanes for cars. And you continue to see that in projects over and over again, whether it's transit or pedestrians or bikes. Being used is kind of this carrot on a stick to get grant money, when in reality, all we're doing is building more lanes for cars. And it's just a pattern. Another item on this, it's just a change to a contract, but the intersection of Mars Hill and Dallas Highway also talks about pedestrian safety, but we're adding slip lanes. Slip lanes are one of the most dangerous things for pedestrians, and we're adding that to that intersection. And so it continues this pattern in this county of saying, oh, we're going to improve safety for pedestrians, or we're going to improve the safety of these roads for other users. Meanwhile, we're just, we're just using that as a cover to add more and more lanes, more and more cars, and more and more dangerous incidents for our pedestrians and our most vulnerable users of the roads. So I just, we just need a culture change in this county. We need policy changes to really look at the most vulnerable, and we need to really start protecting the most vulnerable users of our roads. Thank you, and have a great day.
The next speaker is Timothy Reese.
Good morning. I'm Timothy Rice, Vernon, Georgia. My comments are directed to the citizens of Cobb County as well as the Marietta Daily Journal, and specifically Ann Main, one of the reporters, because I don't know any of the other reporters. Four days ago, illegal aliens faced federal charges in Cobb County, methamphetamine lab bust, United States Attorney General's Office, North District of Georgia. March 21st, U.S. Marshals arrest fugitive Chen Da'wa for murder, violent crimes found in Cobb County. So I'm challenging Ms. Maines to get better with respect to reporting. How is it that Cobb County and their sheriff, Ann Cobb County, turns a blind eye to violent criminals while at the same time Cobb County has actively been involved in litigation against pharmaceutical companies? Cobb County's legal action and settlements include participation in a multi-district litigation with CVS, Walmart, Publix, settlements reached with Rite Aid, $3.5 million, Kroger. The county agreed to a settlement with Kroger as part of a $1.2 billion agreement. Other companies, $15.2 million from Teva and Allergan. I say it's all part of Cobb County's insatiable desire for other people's money. Several weeks ago, we learned that Commissioner Allen is on the board of the Georgia Coalition for Addiction, where he's been a rainmaker to help secure grant money, making up 80% of their budget. Has he or will he resign from the board, given his new role with the county and potential conflicts of interest? How will Cobb citizens know whether he is providing advice and counsel to the Cobb Commissioners? I'm also aware that in November, Cobb County will be a part of a trial seeking even more money. Some estimates are that the county could reap, rather, $500 million if they are successful in that settlement, so I'm asking, how will the citizens know what Commissioner Allen's involvement will be related to that? Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Denny Wilson.
Good morning, Denny Wilson, District Four. I'm here to address you guys this morning about the county's budget, and I think that you guys know that we in the city of Mableton, and oh, by the way, I'm here speaking as a taxpayer in Mableton, so I'm not speaking on behalf of the city of Mableton, but I am speaking on, you know, the budget. I put in an open records request to get a detailed line item budget from the county of the services that are provided in the general fund with the breakdown by commission district, and I received a letter back, an email back saying- litigation with CVS, Walmart Publix, settlements reached with Rite Aid, $3.5 million, Kroger. The county agreed to a settlement with Kroger as part of a $1.2 billion agreement. Other companies, $15.2 million from Tiva and Allergan. I say it's all part of Cobb County's insatiable desire for other people's money. Several weeks ago, we learned that Commissioner Allen is on the board of the Georgia Coalition for Addiction, where he's been a rainmaker to help secure grant money, making up 80% of their budget. Has he, or will he resign from the board, given his new role with the county and potential conflicts of interest? How will Cobb citizens know whether he is providing advice and counsel to the Cobb Commissioners? I'm also aware that in November, Cobb County will be a part of a trial seeking even more money. Some estimates are that the county could reap, reap, rather, $500 million if they are successful in that settlement. So I'm asking, how will the citizens know what Commissioner Allen's involvement will be related to that? Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Denny Wilson.
Good morning, Denny Wilson, District Four. I'm here to address you guys this morning about the county's budget, and I think that you guys know that we in the city of Mableton -- and oh, by the way, I'm here speaking as a taxpayer in Mableton, so I'm not speaking on behalf of the city of Mableton. But I am speaking on, you know, the budget. I put in an open records request to get a detailed line item budget from the county of the services that are provided in the general fund with the breakdown by Commission District. And I received a letter back, an email back, saying that there is no such thing. Well, I know that's a lie, and I know that it's been done before by a sitting commissioner who had requested that some years ago, and it was given to him. So I know that it can be done. And I'm not blaming any of you guys here now for this budget mess, because this was created long before you guys came onto the board, I believe. I know some of you were not here when this budget thing was created. And the only thing that we in the city of Mableton want is we just want the breakdown of the services from the general fund, because if police is broken out, police and DOT is broken out of the budget, and we're still obligated to give you 8.96 mil, then I think there are some discrepancies somewhere with those numbers, and we need to, you know, drill, you guys should drill down in and find out. Or maybe even separate police and DOT out of the general fund, like most counties do. They let their constituents know how much of the budget, what percent of the budget, and how much dollar amount that police services cost. And maybe you guys should do it like they do the fire fund. Maybe if you did it that way, then people wouldn't get the illusion that they're being double taxed. I think this is a conversation that's not going to go away, and I think that more and more people are going to come to you along these lines for this budget, this budget crisis, because, you know, it gives the look of double taxation, even though you guys say that it's not. But, I mean, it just gives that look. And again, maybe further on down the road, you guys may want to create a police fund and break that out of the budget, and, you know, people can see their dollar amount, what we're paying, because we're not going to go away. I mean, we're going to continue to push, you know, for this. We may, we may not ever get answers, but, you know, we're going to try you guys in the court of public opinion. And more and more people now are beginning to look at the county and say, hmm, well, maybe they are on to something. Maybe there's something there that, you know, we need to look at. So until we get the answer, we're going to keep moving forward. Thank you.
The next public speaker is Debra Nukowski.
Good morning. My name is Debra Nukowski. I live in District Three. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to express my sincere gratitude to Cobb County Commissioner Joanne Brunel. In 2016, we began a journey together, a mission to bring sidewalks to Barnes Mill Road. At the time sidewalks existed only up to Woodmont and beyond the point, there was no safe way to walk up the mountain. And yes, I live on Blackjack Mountain, which Barnes Mill winds up towards the top. Unfortunately, walking along the stretch made walking directly in the road, a road known for its sharp curves and dangerous blind spots. The turning port point came for me when my neighbor's dog was tragically killed on the road. I kept thinking this could have been a child or an adult. I always see people walking in the street. I knew that something had to change, so with Commissioner Brunel's support, we got to work to make our neighborhood safer. Today, I want to thank the Commissioner for all her unwavering commitment to our community. Because of her efforts, Barnes Mill Road now has a sidewalk that offers a safe place for everyone, from children riding their bikes, to parents with strollers, and people out walking their dog. And speaking of dogs, my dog Blue sends his thanks. We look forward to our walks every morning, and now we can enjoy them with a peace of mind. Thank you, Commissioner Brunel, for helping making our neighborhood safer and walkable for all. And one more writing I have to add. The area was redistrict. My community is now split. I live in District Three, but across the street is District Two. It actually cut 10 homes out of the Stono Point Association subdivision, since the boundary is Barnes Mill Road. It's funny, talking to my neighbors, when they look at these beautiful sidewalks, I say, well, that's District Two. I said, but I'm in District Three. And so it's a little crazy. People are confused. So I always give both names if they want to make thanks to Eric Allen or to Joanne, but Joanne was the one who was instrumental in getting our sidewalks done. And I thank you, and I appreciate everything that you did, and your patience with me as I constantly hounded you above the sidewalks. I love them, and thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next speaker is Donald Barth.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. You know how long I've waited just to say something? We have changed in Cobb County, and I think it's for the good. I never know what I'm going to talk about, but today, I'm going to talk about a hand. Here's a hand. Cobb County reminds me exactly of that. There's four separate digits here and one thumb. We learned we could move on without one of the digits. Believe me, we could leave the thumb behind from time to time, too. But think about that. We're as diverse as my hand. Every one of those fingers is different, and they all serve a different purpose. Together, we can use them to pray. We can use them to work. We can use them to type for communication. We need all four fingers working together. Thumb, I'm still thinking about that. We play paper, rock, scissors. Two fingers, scissors. Paper, hell, that thumb's way over here. What I'm trying to make sure we all understand is, the hand is the county. You represent all of us, and it makes a difference when I call Joanne, if I call Kelly. If I call them, it's because I need them. I got to see Eric Allen in an important role last week. They were going to exclude him, because that's what we've learned to do in our area. In our Commission District, there was no representation. Y'all know that. Now, let's think about the hand one more time. That hand is so important to have all four digits. You don't have to work together. These two fingers can go over there, this finger, mine's all curled out, going that way. But it takes four of you to make the hand complete. It takes the thumb, too. The thumb tried to take over the hand. Have y'all ever seen that? It's never going to work. Together, if the thumb gets together on the fist, we can conquer anything in Cobb County, and we're going to have to. We're going to face more and more turmoil, as you can see on the TV every day. But we don't have to, as long as we have some unity up there. So that's all I got to say. I'm preaching. Y'all have a great day. Thank you.
The next speaker is Craig Harfoot.
Before I start, the first speakers, you can't hear what they're saying in this room. I don't know if it's the, what's doing on the TV or whatever, but we don't run the clock yet. We just need to fix the audio, okay? Now, you going to reset it? Thanks for nothing. My name's Craig Harfoot. I wanted to talk about the rezoning of the hotel, which helps pay the Braves bond. So you want to, they want to put apartments in there. Well, that's density. Density costs more money. It'll wreck your budget. So people come in, why you start a hotel motel tax was, they don't get our services, we get their taxes. And this is how you get into financial trouble. You don't do this stuff. And anyway, you know, Atlanta's lost black voting districts. Yeah, it was flight into Cobb County the next, you know, we heard about white flight in the 70s, now it's black flight in the 2000s. And it's all about affordability. And I bought my first house in East Point for $9,000 in 1979. Nobody's built. This house was built in '27. It was a $500 Sears Kit House, a $5,000 Sears Kit House. They gave them a stack of two-by-fours. It was all infill housing between arts and crafts houses on this block in East Point that was built in the teens, the 19-teens. Anyway, within two years of this house being built, the Depression hit, and it was nothing. And nothing happened. So I mean, the young people here, I got a daughter, she wants a house, she can't get it, can't afford it. There's going to be a reset. It's going to be bad. And y'all just need to get that in your radar. There's not going to be more and more people coming. We're in the process of depopulating the world right now. Million Ukrainians, million Russians. If you look around, between the weather, earthquakes, all this stuff, people are gone. We're going to have a mass global depopulation. And you all act like we're going to just keep on doing what we're doing, but we're not. So you need to live within our means. You need for the people to be able to stay in their homes as long as they can, because there's forces out there that you have no control over, and yet, they're coming. These cycles occur every hundred years, the lifetime of a person.
Craig Harfoot, your time's up. Vice Chair, that completes the first portion of a public comment.
Thank you. Now, we will move on to our consent agenda, and the items will all be scrolling on the screen, and at the end of the meeting, too, I believe. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, or I can make the motion? Okay. I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
And authorize, and authorize the execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. To add to my motion, sorry.
Second.
You're agreeable.
Just to make sure.
Okay. Call the question. Oh, wait. Discussion, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'd like to have my opposition to Agenda Item Number 12. And while I appreciate the emails that were going back, for a board that is data-driven in our decision-making, there was no data provided to justify this, this action.
So noted. Madam Clerk. Okay. Anything else? Discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0 with the chairwoman absent. Okay, now we'll move on to the regular agenda, and our first item is Number 20, Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Commissioners and Deputy County Manager. The Sheriff's Office and Facilities Management has one item this morning. The Sheriff's Office and Facilities Management, like the Board of Commissioners, ratify previous action by the county manager authorizing emergency procurement, work, and payment to Max Air Mechanical LLC in the amount of $1,708,043 for replacement of an HVAC chiller at the Adult Detention Center. Authorize funding balance appropriation within the general fund in the amount of $1,745,420, and further authorize the county manager, procurement director, and/or the sheriff to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. First or after the motion?
It's preferable after a motion, but you can do it either way you want to.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve Item Number 20?
So moved.
And a second? Second. Any discussion? Commissioner Gamble? No? Nobody? Okay. I do have a couple of questions. I know there's, I've heard there's a 22-month lead time for this new chiller and equipment to come in, to be installed. Is that correct?
Twenty-two weeks. It should be here in September.
Oh, 22 weeks. Okay. And then, should it fail, which we've known for a while, it was on its last leg, I guess, should it fail, what happens with the company, Max Air, as far as, do they have any kind of way to keep it running, or replacing parts, or something till the new chiller?
We have a temporary chiller on standby, and as soon as we get an exact date of the delivery of the chiller, we will bring the temporary chiller here and connect it and be ready to go with the replacement.
Okay. And is the $1.7 million include the spare, or the, or are we renting that, or what? How's that?
It includes it for the work when we do the replacement. If it fails today, that is not included. So there's no reason to have the chiller until we actually need it, so we're not paying for that.
But we're going to use it, even though the?
Closer to the, when the actual work starts, and that is included, the two months rental.
Okay. All right. So I have a motion and a second? Call the, go ahead.
And for the record, because I know the MTJ was there, again, my questions have not been answered, but, again, I don't expect them to be answered. But one of the issues that many people and many citizens notify, notice, is there are six people from the Sheriff's Office sitting here for this Agenda Item. That is where the citizens get upset and don't feel that the sheriff is being a good steward of the taxpayer dollars when we have emergency issues like this requiring $1.7 million to be spent. Now, again, it goes back to the question of, well, who's responsible for maintaining the facilities? Is it the sheriff? Should it be done in the sheriff's operating budget? To the citizens, that's a yes. But here, to the sheriff, it's coming back as no. It's the county's responsibility to maintain that facility. But if it's the county's responsibility to maintain that facility, why are we handing him over an operating budget? These are some questions that, again, continually get batted around by the citizens, and while the sheriff can sit there and say, it's not my fault, the board approved it, we're the ones that are continually taking the heat for expending taxpayer dollars in a potentially unfiscally conservative manner. I kind of want to challenge my fellow board members that this is becoming an issue where not only this elected official, but other elected officials aren't as respectful to the county budget as others are. So do we possibly need to look at a policy where we only give an elected official 1/12 of their budget each month to make sure that they remain within the parameters that we have set? Now, you can sit here and say, oh, well, that's a constitutional requirement that we give the constitutional officers a budget. Nowhere in the Constitution does it say we have to give them their full month's budget at once to spend at their will. So this is a challenge I'm going to give back, because, again, if we can't get expenses reined in, this chiller has been in place for 28 years. The previous sheriff nor the current sheriff ever budgeted for the replacement? Really? Nor has the county? Really? In 28 years, we've never budgeted for this. I also find it funny, we tout that we have a AAA bond rating. But again, we're not budgeting for a simple thing that is needed in order to make sure that a facility remains habitable for people that choose not to be there, right, but are there because they did something that broke the law. So I, again, I challenge this board, going into this budget season, knowing that we have a spending problem in many areas of the county, that this is one way to address it. And again, while the sheriff is a constitutional officer and is, has the respect of those that he serves, having six people sit here for a meeting, wow, what could those six people be doing?
If I can add, I think part of the issue and part of the challenge that we If, if I can add, I think part of the issue and part of the challenge that we see when we have these items, whether it's in the sheriff's office or any other office, but specifically the sheriff's office, there has been, over the years, with the last administration in particular, where items were not addressed in a timely fashion. And we all know that the longer you defer maintenance, the more costly it becomes. So, that's part of what's happening with what we see out of the sheriff's budget, but our current sheriff is addressing issues that the previous administration did not address. So, while it may seem that he's coming before the board with a lot of, I guess, operational expenses, is as you described it, these are deferred maintenance issues that we're dealing with now. And even outside of the sheriff's office, we've even had those same issues come before us as a Board of Commissioner. Over my last first term, there were a lot of items that we had to address, because, for whatever reason, and I'm not being critical of, of anyone, but for whatever reason, previous boards before us, whether it's budgetary constraints, or whatever the issue might have been, those issues were not addressed, so we were forced to deal with it, and we caught a lot of fire because of it. But these are things that, that just had some deferred maintenance, but I see Ms. Hawkins there, prepared to speak on the sheriff's behalf. And regarding the number of people, you know, that are attending the meeting, it's not uncommon for there to be multiple members of any department to attend a meeting. We have DOT staff, we have fire, we have police that also show up to support the agenda items. So, I don't think that having the sheriff's employees here is any different from any of those other departments.
Ms. Hawkins, did you want to shed some light, or Mr. Brody?
Well, actually, we're, we're in a motion, so unless we, you asked Ms. Hawkins a direct question, there should be no response.
Well, I'm hoping she's gonna answer your question.
I have no questions for Ms. Hawkins.
You had a question that was never answered, you said.
Can, can someone from the sheriff's office address the attendance?
Yes, Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Sheffield, thank you for your comments. Commissioner Gamble, we have actually seven people here today, because of the importance of this item. This item is to ratify the, the decision by your county manager to bring these chillers on board, because we need them. We had this item in next year's budget, and I think you knew that. We pushed it from this year's budget to next year's budget, to help the county as far as money is concerned. We pushed it as far back as we could, thanks to Max Air and their amazing maintenance job. But the time has come where we have to prepare to change these chillers. And if we don't do it now, we're going to be in a world of hurt. And then the county will be spending a whole lot more money, because you made the decision that you didn't wanna vote for this item. These chillers are a different breed than what we had before, that have actually been in place for 38 years, not 28 years. The new chillers have eight components, that when one component goes down, the other seven will continue to work. So, they'll be much easier to replace, to keep us from having an issue where if we have a chiller go down, where we don't, that we lose air. And in this particular instance, this chiller facilitates the air in our infirmary, which means that if it goes down, we have to move the infirmary, infirmary, we have to do a whole bunch of different things with all our medical personnel, which subjects us to being sued even more than we already get sued for the things that happen in our jail. So, the reason we have seven people here is because this is an important item, and we wanted to make sure that we showed up to support the work that we do, and the work that we're asking you to do, to make sure that we can continue to serve the people of Cobb County. You know, the pastor made quite a statement when he said that leadership is not about personal gain, but for stewardship. And that's what I'm asking you to do. If you're going to be a leader of this county, steward county citizens, to make sure that we are able to serve every single person in our county. Thank you.
I thought you had a question yesterday that you said was never answered, and I thought that's what you were referring to, not the attendance, because that's not what this is about, the attendance of who's here today. This is about approving of, an item that, I get the urgency and emergency issuance of this, because of, you know, the people that will be affected, employees, inmates, healthcare personnel in the jail. But I do have a problem with the way this was done, that it's coming out of the general fund, because there's no capital expenditures in your budget left, or in Andrew's budget for property management, facilities management. And, you know, we just did 24 million out of Andrew's budget, SPOSS budget, which was an item on SPOSS. This is not. So, this is coming out of the general fund, and there's no way to reimburse it. But I do get the urgency, and I know it will be more expensive if we don't do it now, but, and, and I just found out yesterday in discussion after our agenda prep, that this was in your budget for the current budget for '25, and it was not approved. So, I guess you have been looking at it for a year or so. But with all due respect, Commissioner, the sheriff is, this is his fifth year in office, so we, the previous sheriff keeps getting the blame for a lot of this, but in four years, five years, he would know that this was an issue, I would think. But now, it's gonna be under property management to take care of it, and, and the work to be done. So, thank you.
Well, I, I have one more follow-up comment, because, Mr. Flynn, you know, you don't like my frustration and my questions, that it comes to the budget, yet when you were in my office, you told me these units were 28 years old. Now, today, on a hot mic, you say they're 38 years old.
Commissioner Gamble, I'm sure I told you they were placed in 1987.
What's the truth? Because, again, you come into my office, you did talk to me about it, but you told me they were 28 years old. Now, today, you're saying they're 38 years old. So...
Mrs. Gamble?
It's Commissioner Gamble.
Commissioner Gamble, and my name is Mr. Brody. Please read your agenda item. They were in place in 1987, which makes them 38, if my math is correct.
Well, then, I guess when you were in my office, some math was wrong, because, again, I remember you saying 28 years.
I remember the 1987 date. And that was the original, I guess. Okay.
But, Ms. Sheffield... 87, 97, what's the useful life of, of this equipment?
25 years.
Yeah, so regardless of whatever misunderstanding, it should still have been done at least 25 years ago, so. But I, I just wanna address a point quickly, at the risk of going back and forth, hopefully we won't have that. But, you know, my comments regarding the last administration, I'm obviously not pointing fingers at anyone. You know, the sheriff has been in office for five years, but the point that I'm making, and the illustration that I'm making, is that when you have an item that's being deferred, you can be in office, but there's still a lot of cleanup that has to be done, and it may not necessarily be done within a four- or five-year window. We heard today that they've been trying to get this on the budget since '25. So, you, you can address the issue, but if the funding is not there to do it, then it will continue to be deferred.
Any more discussion? Can we call the question? The motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
And now, we'll move on to DOT, Drew Wrestler.
Good morning, Commissioner, Deputy County Manager. Drew Wrestler with DOT, three items for your consideration this morning. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of two Federal Lands Access Program grant applications to the Georgia Federal Lands Access Program Programming Decisions Committee for Patter Springs Road Trail, project number X2706, and Stilesboro Road at Old Mountain Road Intersection Safety Improvements, and authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble?
So moved.
Second.
Call the question, or any discussion? Call the question.
Motion carries four zero.
With the chairwoman absent.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Advanced Sports Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $153,246.25 for drainage system repairs on Yancey Drive, project number B2291, authorize a corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. These four zero with the chair absent.
Thank you. And our final item this morning is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number one to the Consultant Services Agreement with Kimley Horner and Associates Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $291,770.39 for engineering design of Dallas Highway at Lost Mountain Road, Marshall Road, Cobb County, project number X2305, authorize a corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble?
So moved.
Second.
Call the question? Any discussion?
Actually, I do have a comment. Thank you, Drew. I know this is a long-time coming project, and I know while it was mentioned earlier, this project isn't necessarily having to be done because of Cobb County residents using the road. This intersection gets a lot of traffic that comes through our surrounding counties. So, while I know this one was mentioned as, as not potentially being pedestrian-friendly, it is required because of the volume of traffic, not that it's being caused by Cobb County, but our surrounding counties, so thank you.
Anything else? Call the question. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Good morning, Vice Chair, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. Operated to provide construction services related to synthetic turf infield conversion on Field One at Fuller's Park under the 2011 Parks SPOSS program. The work to convert the infield includes the remaining $71,461.48 of 2011 Parks SPOSS funding, coupled with a donation from Eastside Baseball Association in the amount of $207,482.52 for this athletic field improvement. We appreciate our partnership with Eastside Baseball Association at Fuller's Park, and thank them for their donation. We ask the Board of Commissioners to approve the contract with Sports Fields Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $278,944 for construction services at Fuller's Park, Field One, under the 2011 Parks SPOSS program, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you, Michael. This is in District Three, so I'll make a motion to approve. And discussion, again, thanks to Eastside Baseball Association for helping us out here, and this will close this account, this field out from the 2011 SPOSS. So, that's a good thing, too. So, thank you. Call the question. Motion carries four zero with the chair.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone signed up for the second?
No sign up for this. No one signed up for the second portion.
So, we have no public speaking, and we'll go right on to appointments. And I guess I have the first one to reappoint Roseanne Hall to the Housing Authority of Cobb County. So moved. We have to vote on this one, so...
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries four zero with the chair absent. And the next one is Commissioner Sheffield, to announce the appointment of Deidra Massey to the Planning Commission, and Deidra will replace Michael Hughes, and I thank Michael Hughes for his time for serving as the District Four Planning Commissioner, and he has moved on to the city of Mabelton to lead their Community Development Division. So, thank you, Michael, for your, for your service. Yes, a great job. So, now, we have our Commissioner's public address, and we'll start with Commissioner Gamble.
Born to be a Senior Charity Ride is open to all vehicles. You can get ready for an exciting first annual Born to be a Senior Charity Ride, a community-driven event happening on Saturday, June 28th, at 10:30 a.m. This ride supports Cobb Senior Services and Must Ministries' senior food programs, which help combat food insecurity and provide vital resources to seniors in need. You can scan the QR code to register, purchase a $20 donation ticket, and get all the details. There will be a wine tasting fundraiser on Saturday, June 18th. Nope, I think that should be Tuesday, June 18th. Join Friends of Green Meadows Preserve for the Fourth Annual Wine Tasting Fundraiser benefiting the Bluebird Trail from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, June 18th, at the Marietta Wine Market, 18 Powder Springs Street. Enjoy wine, prizes, music, and a special appearance by Ashley Fresca, host of WSB Radio's Green and Growing. For more information, you can contact Jim Bearden at 404-202-8755. End Flag Day is observed annually on June 14th to commemorate the adoption of the Stars and Stripes as the official flag of the United States on June 14th of 1777. It's a day to honor the nation's symbol and the principles it represents. And lastly, Happy Father's Day to all the dads and father figures who make a difference in our lives.
Thank you for the Happy Father's Day. Thank you. Juneteenth will be celebrated in the, the coming days, Cobb County will be observing on the 19th, but this Saturday on the square, there will be a Juneteenth celebration, so please come out and enjoy the festivities. Also, last weekend, there was the grand opening of the Palisades. It's the New, New Day Palisades down there on the Chattahoochee River. Please come out and take a walk, take a hike, bring your family. It's great work that's been done down there. There were a lot of civic leaders. Commissioner Burrell was there with me, as well as Congresswoman Macbeth and other representatives doing that ribbon cutting. It's a great place to take a walk, spend some time with the family, so come out and enjoy one of the gems of Cobb County.
Yes, that was very beautiful, and that's just phase one, so more to come. Commissioner Sheffield?
Am I up already? Okay. Okay, Brad. Congratulations to the young winners of the Weekend Fishing Rodeo at Fur Family Park in Powder Springs. Alvaro Martinez caught a 12-inch fish, Hugh Hawkins hooked an 11.5-inch fish, and Matthew Martinez caught 11-inch fish. The contest, sponsored by Cobb County Parks Natural Resource Management Unit, are open to youth 3 to 16 years old. The next event will be held on July 26th at Lost Mountain Park in Powder Springs. Contact candace.cook@cobbcounty.gov for additional information. The Friends of the Concord Cover Bridge Historic District invite the public this year to, to this year's Matilda Garden Juneteenth dedication, scheduled at the Silver Comet Trail Concord Road entrance at 10 a.m. Saturday, June 14th. The event will highlight Matilda's Garden and the Tony Morrison Bench by the Road Project, which was revealed last year, as part of the ongoing efforts to preserve and elevate African-American history within Cobb County's first historic district, home to its iconic covered bridge, historic mills, and residences. The keynote speaker will be historian and the great-great-granddaughter of Ms. Huff, Tanya Cotton, with special remarks by Congresswoman Lucy Macbeth. Parking and shuttle service are available at 88 Concord Road in Smyrna. Visit Eventbrite to register for the event. There is... There is an upcoming special election for two of five seats on the Georgia Public Service Commission on November 4, 2025. The primary is June 17, 2025. The Georgia Public Service Commission oversees regulating the state's utility services. The Commissioners' decisions and outcomes directly affect how much people in Georgia pay for necessary utility services. To learn more about the organization, visit psc.ga.gov. And we welcome Deidra Massey as the new District Four Representative on the Planning Commission, succeeding Michael Hughes. Deidra brings a wealth of experience to this role while currently serving with distinction on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Her deep understanding of land use issues, coupled with her commitment to community-centered decision-making, makes her a tremendous asset to the Planning Commission and to District Four residents. I don't know if she's here with us, I didn't see her, but anyhow, thank you, Deidra, for stepping up to serve District Four residents. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, so, the U.S. Army's birthday, 250th birthday, join the celebration of the 250th U.S. Army birthday as we remember its creation in 1775, in a week-long celebration that started on Saturday, June 7, and goes until Saturday, June 14. The Army originally consisted of volunteer soldiers with roots in the Continental Army and was formed to fight the Revolutionary War. Today, as the largest branch of our nation's military, the proud men and women of the U.S. Army continue to provide peace and security for all of us. Also, June 14 is Flag Day, as we heard. This celebration occurs each year on the anniversary of the American flag's official adoption, June 14. There's still a few tax assessor meetings in the communities. The last one in my district is tonight, June 10, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Mountain View Library. The Board of Tax Assessors has mailed out the residential assessment notices. You can visit the Tax Assessor's webpage for all the information, or you can come tonight and have a one-on-one visit with the appraisers to help walk you through the, your assessment. Excuse me. Next slide. You've heard of all the, there's a lot going on for Juneteenth, so come out to the square. County offices will be closed to recognize this holiday on Thursday, June 19. And there are events around Cobb. You can visit cobbcounty.gov/communication/news. And there are plenty of celebrations in Cobb for Juneteenth, a day commemorating the end of slavery in the United States. Budget and millage hearings coming up. Okay, so, we will hear details on the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget at an informational work session, 1:30 on Tuesday, the 24th, two weeks from now, 1:30 work session. And there'll also be three public hearings on the budget and the millage, as required. Tuesday, July 8 at 9 a.m. during our regular board meeting. Wednesday, July 16 at 6:30 p.m. as a special called meeting, special hearing. And then Tuesday, July 22 at our 7 p.m. meeting, when the budget and millage will be voted on. You can also go online to cobbcounty.gov/finance/budget to get more details, and you can watch online if you're not able to attend the public hearings. And last but not least, Happy Father's Day to all the incredible dads, grandpas, everybody. Congratulations, and Happy Father's Day. So that concludes our meeting. Anything, Mr. Geese? You're good? We are adjourned. Thank you.